How are you, sir?
Couple of questions, if you have questions.
No, I know you've done a lot of questions.
What do you want me to ask?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. I'd like to take and welcome everybody to Cortez City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the Monazuma County Republican Central Committee. I would like to introduce Jan Gardner, she is our secretary at here, and then our treasurer, Robert Holes, and Casey McClellan, our chairman, he was not able to make it this evening due to school board obligations. I'm Danny Wilken and I will serve as the moderator. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank all the candidates that are willing to come forward and serve the residents of Monazuma, of Cortez, and make decisions that have impacts on all of Monazuma County. We have three candidates, or two candidates that were unable to attend this evening, Joseph Farley and Sue Bets. I would also like to thank Jared Jedekiah Coy with Mesa TV for filming this and streaming this to Facebook. We will allow two minutes for self-introductions and the reasons you are running for city council. We will collect written questions from the audience and they will be compiled based on like topics. We will give two minutes for a response, but please keep as brief as possible. And the questions can be directed to all candidates or just one candidate. And thank everyone else for coming out this evening also. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Bill, would you like to do the first introduction?
My name's Bill Banks, I've lived in the city of Cortez for 44 years. I was married to my wife Lori for 41 years, she passed away in 2018. I've worked in the energy sector for 43 years, 24 of which was in a supervisory position. I'm a fiscal conservative, I believe in accountability and spending other people's money the same way I spend my own. I believe that we take care of needs first and then wants, we make sure that we have a sufficient rainy day fund, and if there's anything left over, then we go to wants. Yeah, we just need to take care of what's going on, we need to keep our tax rates lower, we need to keep burdensome regulations at a minimum, and I think these are things that will bring in not only new business, but also grow the businesses that are already here. I worked on my local church board for the last five years, and I've worked on the budgets there, of course my household budget, and I would have to work on the city budget, but budgets, it doesn't matter, it's just money in and money out. You take care of what you got, and that's about it.
Thank you, Bill.
Hello, I just wanted to say thank you to the Monazuma County Republicans for the invite and to Danny Wilken for moderating. My name is Arlena Yazi, I have been a resident of Monazuma County for the last 18 years, about seven of those years have been in Cortez. I am 26, a recent homeowner as of last November, and I have a great love for this community. I've been very fortunate to have very forward-facing jobs here, especially the jobs that I've had in the last couple of years have been at the forefront of a lot of the issues that we're facing with problems facing our youth, housing, jobs. I currently work as an outreach specialist for Cortez Integrated Healthcare, and that means I spend a lot of my time doing outreach at our soup kitchens, the workforce center, the library, the bridge. And I've gotten a lot of perspective and grown some really great relationships with those people that are trying to alleviate some of those issues. I feel like having grown up here, I also have the perspective of those issues because my own family struggled growing up, and it makes me more passionate about trying to help alleviate those. My vision for the community is that we're able to grow deeper roots here, that our community is able to find those jobs, to find housing, to really find a way to belong here and not feel like they have to leave because they just can't. And I feel that a lot of people want to see our community thrive and would like to see it grow.
I'm Raymond Goodall, I was born and raised here in 1935, at a country house out here in northern town. I went through all my schooling here, started schooling at Agner until my dad got drafted, that made mom move into Areola. Ed Kemper was my first teacher, and followed me into Cortez at the old rock school building. I went through junior high there, well, the new high school was being built out here across the highway from New Mountain Cafe. My working experience, I spent 12, 14 years with Caltrans, working highways, toll roads. I ended up putting in way of motion stations by myself, since others was not agreeable to work with people, but I was pretty strict on that. I worked for a couple of big companies, global, international, Bechtel Corporation, I was inspector for both those firms, both of them are well-known throughout the world. I kept records for Caltrans, I was the one that accepted to finish work. It had to be guaranteed to last at least 12 years, or it fell off on me to explain why not. I like spending money on construction sites, I expected at all times that the work met qualifications. I'm an avid reader of plans and specifications. I'm 84 years old, I know both of our commissioners, was raised with them, I think we could work quite well with one another and get along. My top concern will always be the local people and the citizens of Cortez. That's about all I can say right now.
My name's Ray O'Brien, I was born and raised here in Cortez, Colorado. I went to Monroe Elementary School, I attended our high school here, and I graduated, after that I went to culinary school in Denver for two years. I graduated from that with a honors and an associate's degree in culinary arts, which I then moved back home and worked in some construction industries, some coding industries. I actually at that time went ahead and took it upon me to have a side job to do repossession and help people with, you know, getting their property back through that. After that, I actually have worked at a lot of restaurants in this community, I worked at the H Street Brewery at a young age of 15. I've actually worked with Mr. Vaston over here and Lady in the Crown at Coco's, whenever it was Coco's, helped do the conference center there for a long time. I also helped Mr. Desmond with Polandies, and I also helped Wiggle and Pig with Ernie. I came from the restaurant background, wanting to come into our community and open more restaurants and things, but I gradually saw that that was a real hard thing to do coming from demographics that we don't have in our area. With that being said, I want to step up and make the change in our community, or try to help make the change in our community. Seeing as how I was born and raised here, and I've worked my entire life, and I have a younger mind and opinion on things, I could help show and broaden the outreach of people that, you know, might not be represented, because I truly personally believe that a lot of 30-year-olds that don't make more than their wage don't really have a representation in our city council. And to see that from maybe another side and to have ideas from, you know, a different, you know, background of things might help. And again, I was born and raised here, I love this place. I came back, I want to live here, I have my daughter here, I am a very, very, very family-oriented person, anybody that knows me will tell you that, I helped my father at his business too. This is where I want to be, and I want to see this place get better.
Hi, my name's David Rainey, and I'm running for city council because I love this community. And I believe my work and life experiences have given me the attitudes and skills necessary to successfully work as a part of a leadership team. I grew up in a small rural town in Texas, graduated from River Street, North Texas, served in the Naval Air Reserve, and worked and lived in the Dallas area most of my life. In my early career, as an R Director, I worked with people with very different perspectives, ideas, and goals, not all of which I shared. I learned to use common sense to find common ground and a successful way forward. My wife and I moved here about 10 years ago, after having visited Cortez for many years because we love the natural beauty of this place. And I wanted to retire in a community more like the one I grew up in, where neighbors care about each other. We found that here. Since moving here, I've been a substitute teacher, which keeps my finger on the pulse of the families who live here through the ideas and hopes and dreams of their children. I believe that I will be a good city councillor because I know how to listen, I'm open-minded and optimistic, and believe that by using common sense to find common ground, we can successfully address the challenges that Cortez faces. I also believe we can build on the many successes of the employees and leadership of the city of Cortez.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Carver, I'm a resident of the city of Cortez. I've been in the area all my life, most all my life. I have raised my two sons here, they both live and work in Cortez. And my background, I'm a licensed property casualty insurance producer, I also have a license in life and health insurance, that's been a huge part of my professional background. For a time, I worked at the city of Cortez as a code enforcement officer. I worked in the planning and building department, which was kind of new to the planning and building department before that, the position was with the police station. I learned an awful lot in that job, just being in that department. I really picked up some good things from that and working at the city. And I am running for city council because I would like to put my experience to work for the city and for the community, and, you know, maybe seeing a new chapter for the city of Cortez, the city council, and working and collaborating with Monazuma County as a whole, because we're all part of the same thing. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm writing notes because I too am a voter and I want to make sure that I'm knowledgeable, so that's why you see me scribbling. My name is Jason Witt, I'm not as old of a residence as most, I've been here for nine years, actually 10 years now, going on 11. A little bit about me, I consider myself and my role to be a servant leader. I strive to possess a "I serve first" mindset. I focus on listening to understand, to empower and uplift those I work for and with. I work to serve instead of command, showing humility instead of brandishing authority, and I will look for ways to enhance our community and unlock its potential creativity with a sense of purpose for our citizens. I will be supportive and an advocate of responsible government, and to show that, I will be a new messenger of change. I believe one of the reasons I'm running is that I have a certain skill set that can help give back to the community. I've had the pleasure of taking several governance leadership classes and seminars, which enables me to be a little bit more familiar in policy governance, the Robert Rules of Order, parliamentary government, which enables me, hopefully, which will enable me to be a better servant of the public. I believe that we need to use our talents and abilities to serve others. I believe all men and women have been given special abilities, and within certain limitations, we should develop these abilities and give vent to our own imaginations and not become rubber stamps. We should use these to develop our talents and the abilities of those around us, and not limit ourselves. We all must live, excuse me, one must live, not only exist, we must do, not merely be, we must grow, not just vegetate. We must use our talents in behalf of our fellow men and women, rather than burying them in a tomb of a self-centered life. That is my mission, that is my hopes and ambitions, is to be the servant leader that builds a community up. It's not about me. In the story that I tell of Cortez, it's about the citizens, it's about what they want and what they need. They're the hero of the stories. We should never, as council individuals, be that hero. The hero is the talent, it is their story. It's my goal to help make that story come to life. You know, be, if you will, they'll be one to you, the Skywalkers. It's not about me, it's about you.
Thank you, my name's Rachel Medina, I've been a resident of Cortez for four years, before then I got my degree in geology from Florida State. I moved here for my job at the county, I'm in the mapping and addressing department, and working for the county gave me a great perspective, I really got to know the community through my job and understand how local government works. And this is what motivated me to get involved in the city of Cortez as a citizen, because I bought a house a few years ago in city limits. So I've always loved helping others and being actively involved in my community. I've prided myself on being a good listener and making friends with people from all backgrounds. So I've been on city boards for several years now, so I've gotten a better understanding of how the city works, and I'm knowledgeable about city services and funding mechanisms. And this was a great opportunity for me to give back to my community and step up to be a city council member. I believe city council members should be knowledgeable, forward-thinking, and help plan for the long term. They should also be prepared for every meeting and be accountable to their constituents. And this is the type of city council member that I will be, and this is a great opportunity for me to give back to my community. I'm deeply committed and I want to see Cortez to improve with positive growth and development that supports our diverse community interests while protecting our existing role character. Every organization I've been a part of has recognized my dedication, and this has led to greater responsibilities within each. I'm ready to work hard for the constituents of this community and come to every meeting prepared to make informed decisions, and I also want to focus on long-term planning and economic development for our community.
Hey, everybody. My name's Justin Vasteling, I'm the general manager of the Holiday Inn Express in town. I oversee operations at the Retro Inn that some of you might remember or know as the Budget Host, or previously the American Garden, or previously the Bell Row, which I think is where a lot of us remember it. There's a lot of history on that property, it's super cool. And I oversee operations at the Destination Grill, but that's a very easy job because Freedom is our general manager and does an incredible job. You guys might remember Destination Grill as Coco's, I think it's been that for a long time. I don't know if you like what we did, or if you don't, but it was fun and I'm proud of the role I played in it. The reason I'm running is I can help us, I can help the city. My experience in operations is, I said this at a meeting the other night, you guys, I might be more qualified to be the city manager than a city council candidate, but I've spent a decent amount of time watching all the videos of all the city council meetings, and there's a void I think I can fill to help us where we're going with my experience looking at operations. I think the last couple meetings at city council, if anybody's kind of familiar with some of the things going on, pretty intense, a lot of important issues to a lot of people. I think the most important takeaway for me with that is listening to everybody and being a representative of the city, and not trying to push an agenda on the town that trusts you to make decisions in their absence or for them. So also, there's a lot to learn, I don't know that I'm going to be coming to this job the right person to make decisions right out of the gate, there's a ton to learn, and I am down to learn, and a question was asked a while ago, how much time can we make for it? I don't think it's about, or how much time we have to dedicate to city council, I don't think that's the right question. I think the question is how much time will you make for city council? I don't think having a surplus of time is a good quality to run on. I will carve out, I mean, I'm kind of a workaholic, but I will carve out the time to do diligence and to make good decisions on everyone's behalf if that's what you guys want to have happen.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Amy Huckins. A little bit about myself starts with my upbringing. For my teenage years, I found myself without a father or the traditional support from family, and to get through those years of growing pains, I learned the hard way. I made a lot of mistakes and I definitely learned from them. I wouldn't change a thing about my upbringing because it caused me to be strong-minded, motivated, and determined. Geared up with this mentality, I got promoted at my job at the golf course from cart girl all the way up to accounting in the executive offices. I learned how to document, allocate, transfer funds with attention to the business's budget, and engage in complete transparency to the members and the shareholders via written monthly newsletters. Continuing on, I have worked in the service industry for many years as well. I think serving people their food and their beverages is a job that everybody should take on at some point in their lives. Going into a shift, you never know what to expect, much like a city council meeting. You have to be dynamic in each situation or each person you come into contact with. You need to be dynamic, as well as humble and grateful for their business. I think these skills are absolutely transferable and necessary to carry over into a city council seat. Going on in life, I lived on a small island in southeast Alaska for a number of years. I worked for a government agency there where we guided at-risk use in the wilderness for 45 days at a time. So that's no cell phones, no extras, no hugs from loved ones. The list of responsibilities and intensive training that job required is quite long, so I'll just say my main task, aside from keeping 12 other humans alive... So I'll just say my main task, aside from keeping 12 other humans alive and not lost in the Alaska wilderness, was as a mediator. I found that I really enjoyed the process of being the go-between. I liked hearing from both sides of the argument. I'm a solution and goal-oriented person, and helping two people come to resolution is a really great feeling. I'm a proud homeowner and small business owner here in Cortez, which means I've put my roots down and I'm not going anywhere. I love Cortez and the community that its citizens here have created. You find friendship with people you may never have expected. And I commit to the city of Cortez to keep my passion for listening to its citizens and to helping community connections. I commit to hearing each voice. Thank you.
Lee Roy.
Hi, my name's Lee Roy Roberts. I moved here five years ago. I'm semi-retired. I sit on the board of directors for the sanitation department here. I would like to continue serving the citizens here of Cortez. Like all of you know, the last few meetings there at city council was about the code issue. I feel that the three meetings, or the three meetings that they had in the past, one in 2019 and two in 2018, we need to get the citizens back involved in this, not just for the city, the county also. My background is in construction. I was a superintendent for 25 years. Last five years of my job, I was an engineering instructor. Like I said, I moved here five years ago. I purchased a house. I ain't going nowhere. This is a dead center in the middle of my kids' meeting in Ranjungshin in Albuquerque. So good to pick a better place. My goals are, is to get the people back together and let spring businesses here to town where everybody can make money, they help each other. My goal is here, is to be a city council and to work with the people as they come up, find out what their bookie board, what they want to ask, and see if we can work together on it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, candidates. Go ahead and move on into the questions right now. This will be a two-part question, and we'll go ahead and start here with Bill. What is your opinion on all the recreational marijuana shops in Cortez? And then, would you be in favor of lowering the moratorium if the number of marijuana, on the number of marijuana shops we have here?
Microphone.
Speak into the mic, please.
Microphone. I actually voted against having recreational marijuana here. I think it's brought people from out of state to purchase marijuana here, Utah, Arizona, New Mexico, where they, some of it goes, I think, to the reservation and is resold for three and four times the price they buy it at. I would not be in favor of more marijuana shops here. I believe we have more marijuana shops here than we do liquor stores. I'm not in favor of more of either one, but it just seems to me like we have enough already.
I'll go ahead and speak towards that. I, Amy Huckins, I had the pleasure of speaking with persons who were part of the initial marijuana initiative going forward in Cortez. And it wasn't a rash decision. It was well thought out, well mapped out, with the 1,500-foot engagement avoidance with other marijuana places. And from that point, they pretty much thought that four locations for marijuana sales would be where Cortez would be at. Currently, we're at six. We are, we've just pushed back the quasi-judicial hearing, so this is actually very current stuff, and this is very current stuff the next council will be probably also dealing with as more businesses are wanting to come in. There was another business back in December that got a temporary licensure to operate CBD extraction site up in the industrial building. So it's not just the marijuana is, you know, this thing for teenagers. It's not whatever. It's a carefully thought-out process, and Cortez is benefiting from it from into the general fund. So, thank you.
Stephanie.
Yeah. I just want to say, I think that Cortez at this point really has enough marijuana shops, and I know that there's the New View or something like that that was on the table at city council that's coming up. And just in my opinion, as the country moves more and more towards legalizing recreational marijuana in every state, then it's not going to be a huge profit or a... I mean, I personally don't see how we can sustain seven marijuana shops business-wise, but that's just sort of my opinion. I think the tax, the tax revenue that the cannabis industry has generated for the city of Cortez has been pretty substantial, and that's probably a very good thing. But I think maybe we're zoned out. We have as many as we can take, and perhaps there could be a moratorium considered on how many in the future. Just my thought.
Okay, thank you. Rachel.
So I actually worked in the marijuana industry. I actually was a manager at the Beacon in Mankis, and I was a manager at the Livwell in here in Cortez. I also have my medical card. I truly, truly believe that we needed to, not necessarily let recreational happen so soon because we didn't have enough research from the medical side. Like I said, being a medical patient and coming from this industry and working in it, it's, it was entirely of, it was like a a rolling stone ball down the hill that you were trying to catch and couldn't. There were always different things. There were always different meetings. I actually attended meetings in Mankis because I worked there. I wanted to show support for where I worked. I also took the job at the time because we didn't have restaurant jobs here at the time, so it was a, it was a good void. Being a manager, I managed a lot of people. I helped a lot of people get jobs. I did help, and it was beneficial to a point. There are complete and total truths from Mr. Bank's side. We saw more people come into that place that I know are not using it for the right means. Us being down here on the corner, we had a lot of legality issues whenever you worked in those places because you have to specify, you should not take this anywhere, and that's on you. And a lot of this is being misconceptionalized and being like, oh, we can travel with it. You can't, you can't, can't, can't. Another thing that, again, because it's been in our newspaper, there was legal money issues that was brought up to one dispensary. I didn't work there at the time, but there was a legal issue that was brought up where there were embezzlements and things. So the money is not 100% kept track of. Again, it was an attractive industry and it was great, but truly, we needed more medical, and we don't need any more recreational stores here. And that is, from working in one, we have enough, and they also have enough things that they need to get going because, like I said, managing those places are really, really hard. Your badge can be up at any given time with a $10,000 fine. I did it. And it's just, it's really hard, and there needs to be more accountability, especially, like I said, coming from that place.
Thanks for your... Rachel.
We may think as a community that we have too many pot shops, but we could say that about several industries. And the beauty of capitalism is that if the business doesn't have the demand, it'll fail. And every person should have the right to pursue their business and see if it works or not, and let the community decide if we have too many.
I second that.
Lee Roy.
With having this many marijuana stores and the industry for the farmers to get back to county, I know a couple of people that's in it, and I've learned from it. But in the city of Cortez, do we want to be known for the pot shops that are here? Or do we want to create other businesses, attraction, here for our kids to stay here and for us to work at, instead of working at Cortez and you have to drive for 30 minutes to an hour? I think we have enough, and let the farmers do the rest.
Thank you. Anybody else? David.
Can I have one more thing?
No, let's go through, I'll hear you. Lee Roy.
I think we've got plenty of the dope factories here. I'll tell you an experience I had. In the 80s, I thought I wanted to be a policeman. So I applied to LAPD, one of the biggest police forces we had. They took us through a dope factory, showing us how they cut it, how they clean it, and everything. But what stuck with me most was what the instructor told us just before we left, or was this miss. He said he didn't know how you cut it, clean it, wrap it, or whatever you do to it. Remember one thing, it's just like you. When we sat down to a table to enjoy a steak, we liked the tenderest, juiciest part. Dope is very similar to that. Sooner or later, it's going to let itself be known. And then, people, who do we blame for bringing it in? Because they're not after us, our age group. They're after our youth. Think about that. Who is going to accept the responsibility when that starts to happen? That's all I can say.
Jason. David.
I think I'd like to join my colleague down in there. I'm not an authority on marijuana, but I do think maybe we need some other businesses more desperately than we need more marijuana shops. I'd be real happy to have a Home Depot. But bottom line, I think if you drive through town and you look at the license plates on cars, check out Walmart. That's what I'd like to see. I would like to see tourists and people from surrounding areas coming here to get what they need, with the exception of maybe marijuana.
Thank you.
I'd like to agree with Rachel on the fact that whether or not you're for or against it, you need to make your opinion known because otherwise, we end up in a situation where we're putting another pot shop in and people are are very upset, kind of like the medians, where if it's not known, then you end up in that kind of kerfuffle, I guess. I think it's important to also think about the fact that other states around us are considering their own legalization. We have, we have seven pot shops or six pot shops in our area, and they're generating revenue for our city, but we're not bringing in other businesses. And they decide that they would rather go to those, those businesses would rather go to those other states to sell their marijuana. We're going to lose that revenue. So just forward-thinking.
Thank you. Jason.
I'm on the fence on this one, and I know that you don't like us to hear that, but I wrote my note down so I can ponder this more. But one of my beliefs is strong, as I sit as part of the Realtor Party, is to protect the advantage of public policies. I'm reading this from our, from our, from our party's website. But our goal is being good advocates to advance public policies and candidates that build strong communities, protect property interest, and promote vibrant business environment. So I can't sit up here and say, no, we don't want them, because on the other side is, those people that are coming in to spend the dollars here, they're spending dollars here at our stores. Yes, they may be coming in for a recreational drug. They may be coming in for a medicinal drug, but they're still here. Would I like to see other businesses that drive them in? Absolutely. I would love to see that. But they're here. What are we doing to capture that? What other businesses are there there for them to take advantage of? You know, are we building a robust city around and say, hey, listen, yeah, I might have come here for this, but the city that, and there's so much that I can do here. So, you know, they're here. They're not going to leave. They're either going to survive or die. If they survive, what are we doing to capitalize on that? Because they're here to spend, they're going to spend money. That's not the only stop. They're getting gas. They're going to our grocery stores. All of that is taxes for our city. So do we chase them out of town because we're completely against it? And for no means. I am not. I don't like the youth. I don't like how it rolls down in our schools. You know, I have a mother-in-law that's a teacher that sees some of the effects on the youth, on how it has. So, but, it's, again, it's the elephant in the room. It is here. What are we going to do to take advantage of that and grow our city? Because I still think that we can be a great city and grow ourselves and make it a reason for them to stay. It's not just because this, they came in. They've got great little local shops they can go, they can go shop at and enjoy our city.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the next question. The city of Cortez owns the Cortez Municipal Airport. How do you view the airport as it relates to the growth and well-being of the city of Cortez and the county?
Sure. I'd like to see, as the city grows, the airport grow. I'd like to see the runway maybe extended and able to land some small jets in here for passengers. Yeah, I think that's doable in the future if we can, we can get enough business in here through lower tax rates and less, bring some regulations. I don't see why that's not possible in the future.
Jason.
Part of the key to growth is infrastructure. An airport, you know, as much as we think that it's a luxury, is still part of infrastructure. Roads is infrastructure. But getting this airport, if we want to grow, we need to grow. We need to grow smart. But I think it's, you know, my personal opinion, I think it's important. We need to develop these resources that we have to bring in those businesses. I see big communities, I see communities bringing in great big businesses. Not that we want a new Amazon distribution center, or we may not want the next big box Google to, you know, to come in. But those companies choose areas for reasons. They choose areas because they can get in and out of them easily via the airport. They have good roads. They have rural broadband, but they have these infrastructures to grow. We want to get people here. We want to say, look at what we have. And we can't do that unless we expand, unless, and we grow. We can do that smart. But I think that the airport and the airport expansion and getting some bigger planes in here is key to, is key to our growth. It's part of our infrastructure.
Thank you. Rachel.
So I actually, to better understand city council, I've been meeting with department heads. And I recently got to meet with the airport manager because I've heard this idea tossed around, and it sounds like a great idea. But I would advise every city council member to do that and go and physically see the airport location and what's surrounding it and understand our metrics. You know, we love to think that our city is growing and that the demand may be there, but I don't think the demand is there quite yet. And we've talked about trying to bring it in freight planes, but then that we're talking about increase, that's pushing towards internet sales instead of local sales. So I think we're, before we put the cart before the horse, we need to understand what is the demand on our airport? Are we, is it more than the airport has capacity for? Or is that something we need to push down 10 years until our community really does grow and has those businesses? I'd rather see our community grow and then that demand be inevitable, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
So for the budget, directly from the Cortez budget that you already put out this last year, we have proprietary funds that trickles down into enterprise funds that goes directly into the airport funds. This last meeting, they, you know, they pushed through runway, runway work. So we're having that upkeep happen. As far as taking ourselves away from the fact there is funding for the airport, speaking for myself and some other people that have experienced their, you know, times in the Cortez airport. Cortez Airport where perhaps they got a phone call and all of a sudden their flight's been canceled. Or, you know, the flight, like the company can't get enough pilots to, or workers to fly the planes or to man the planes. I don't know if it's necessarily the physical location of the airport expansion or whether or not we recruit a company that can get the job done and then see if the faith can grow in what the Cortez Airport can give to the people.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, the runway needed work. You're landing these planes here and you want to keep that runway up. We get the businesses here, we get an airline here that will give us good prices for our local people, not just for visitors coming in. When we lost that other company, there is no more benefits coming into us. We have to either go to Farmington, Durango, and, you know, you fly out of there. You get the infrastructure here and you get the businesses here, keep our kids here, that will help the airport also.
Justin?
I may be a different take on this. I can be convinced, but I don't think a short runway is why our economy is struggling. I think it'd be cool if we could, if that, there's not a bottleneck there that I am aware of. I can be convinced that I'm wrong on that, but I haven't heard something convincing yet. I would like to change that topic on the runway or the airport a little bit in that it'd be really cool if someone was teaching private pilot classes out there. It'd be cool to do some skydiving, you know, there'd be different things. I mean, it doesn't have to be a giant airport for us to do other things out there. And I think that would be a great place to start, but we're not, city government isn't in the start and run a business business. We should make it, we should encourage people to do that, make it easier for them, and then get out of their way and let them do it and maybe hear about their challenges and see if we can't help make things like that happen.
I would just like to add to what Amy and Rachel have said, because I see it as kind of a catch-22. It would be really nice if we had more regular and more passenger airplanes coming in and going out. However, you need to have consistent business along with it. One doesn't necessarily generate the other. And so, do you risk it and bring in more, or do you recruit the airlines first? And I would say probably getting another airline would be a good start.
Thank you, David.
I would actually like to see our airline have a little bit more done to like even the building or security. Just, I mean, maybe not necessarily something that the city has control of because of FAA regulations and because of TSA and all that, but I do know the gentleman who does the security down there and it's just one gate, one thing. And, I mean, with bigger planes and bigger things, we've also truly got to think of, you got to have it so that you can have these people that are safe and able to come into our area safely and feel safe and secure. So, I mean, I would like to see at least a little bit of stuff done, even with the buildings and just the general upkeep or more upkeep of our airport. And that's just from living here for the past 30 years, there truly hasn't been a lot that has been focused on our airport since we've lost a lot. So that's just kind of where I stand on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ray?
I've been down there a time or two. I think they still teach flying down there. The last time I was there, they were talking about it, the small planes, you know, one engine planes. But I was under the impression they do teach. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't take much to extend that airport. That's pretty soft terrain down there. And you only go down about six feet to start compaction back up. That's what we did in San Diego, and I know we ain't going to get them that big here. But I'd like to see it expanded also. I think that'd be a good incentive for us. I'd like to see a motel built down there maybe, or something to that effect. But the people I've talked to, I haven't heard from them that they'd like to build down there, but I'd like to see them expand. I'd be all for that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm all in favor of our airport expansion, but also on that note, I'm doing my own research, doing more research and trying to talk to experts in other communities that have brought in larger airlines and asked them how, what the return on investment was from that. I think it's important for us to analyze and see and predict, try to predict what the benefit would be for us to expand the airport.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. What major, what major changes, excuse me, do you believe need to be proposed to make the city function more efficiently?
From my years of experience working out in California, I think the state of Colorado is getting ready to put a truck bypass here in Cortez. That's why you see our beautiful islands going in our Main Street. If you remember, that's where our 18-wheel trucks stop, download, and service stores on our Main Street. They can't do that any longer. You've got those medians in there. So I think the state of Colorado is, and this, they've also practiced before. And I think we're due for a truck bypass here at Cortez. How they're going to do it, I really don't know. I know they've got a way of going out here to Doug Creek on their northern route. We've got the truckway station down here on the south. They'll probably reroute around, pick up the Durango Highway on our east side, on our north side going through. They probably route them around and then put a small section on both sides with scales to weigh them for the northbound trucks. But still, what is our trucks going to do that unloads here in Cortez? Because in the past, they parked right in the middle of Main Street, remember? That's all I got to say.
Can you reword the question again for, one more time? I'm sorry, I was trying to write, was your...
What major changes do you believe need to be proposed to make the city function more efficiently?
One suggestion I have is I think the city needs to understand the difference between mandated public notices and outreach. I think outreach is a more intensive, but a better way to gauge our community on issues. Outreach is where we go and we actually reach out to the community and make it more convenient for them to participate and have their voice contributed to ideas that are coming through.
Excuse me. I agree with Rachel. I think it's very important that we have that, the community involved and that we're listening to them as much as possible. But if we step back a little bit and really figure out, I'm going to talk about, you know, governance for a little bit and who, you know, who drives the bus. Right now, from what I've seen at meetings in the land use code is that we don't have a bus driver. There's no checks and balances. Our responsibility as individuals on the council is to, first, is to listen to the individual and to act on the majority while keeping in mind the needs of the majority. It actually says that in our duties, not, I think, quoted very well. But we also have to remember what our responsibility is as governance. You know, are we holding, right now, and for years before, there's no accountability. Do we know what we need to ask for? Are we asking for budgets? Are we asking for things that we need to see in order to make good decisions? You know, that's our, that's our right. You guys expect that from us. We don't need to sit on our hands and go, well, I don't know what our job is. So we need to, in order to make the changes, we need to know what our responsibility is. Know governance. Know that we are representing the individual and we can ask those questions. We need to ask those hard questions of the city. And remember, you know, that, you know, we work for you and the city manager works for us. Hold his feet to the fire. You know, if he's not performing, if you're a boss or a shareholder in a company, you're a CEO and you sat in front of that table and that general manager was losing money, don't you think that you, every meeting, that you would be in his grill asking, hey, why isn't my business profitable? But we haven't done that. We haven't sat there and said, why? You know, and once we know why and we hold him accountable, hopefully, if he's doing his job, he'll hold his employees accountable. You know, because we can't, we can't attack them because we attack our one, our one employee, and that is the city manager. And if he's not producing, we keep asking why. And that is, I think, the very first thing that needs to happen to make the city function better. We need to listen and we need to ask that question. We need to ask the hard questions. We are the checks and balances. You know, we are the, the voice piece for you all. And, you know, I can't sit idly by and just be like, oh, yeah, just send me this bill. Yeah, it looks okay. It passes the smell test, so let's do it. You've got to ask the questions and hold them accountable. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
You're right.
Well, first of all, he's right. The city manager is, we got to talk to him and find out. We have, I believe somebody said 15 or 16 empty buildings on Main Street that businesses could either rent. You know, you need to get something here. And as city councils and stuff, or city council members, we need to hold the city manager and the department head responsible. They're the ones that give him their budget and what they see what needs to be done. Once we find that out, then we have a goal to work, you know, work towards, instead of just sitting back and letting certain people say yes and like you said, write a check. No, it don't work that big.
Justin?
Thank you. I'm going to take issue with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Witt on this. I just want to make two points. How many of you think it would be awesome if your boss came in and said, why isn't my business profitable? That's not, that's not how you lead. I think our city manager's awesome. I think they, we've got some people down there, you guys, that have been doing a crazy job in some really crazy circumstances. There are some things that have happened, like the embezzlement, and I'm here to tell you, that's not, if you're in a position of trust, there's no stopping you from stealing from somebody that trusts you. That, good luck. If you are an accountant or you're someone in, high up in finances and you want to embezzle, you're going to get it done. It's so hard to stay on top of that stuff. I'm not making excuses, but I've never been encouraged or motivated to do better or to rise above the situation by someone getting in my face and talking numbers. What I love is when an owner or investor says, we, not you, or we, not I, and says, what do you need help with? It looks like we're struggling. How do you, what do you think the situation is? How can I support you? That's my experience with leadership. The other thing is with employees, there's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges coming our way. And if you think of me as an employee, probably some of you have had some employees, if you got a, if your employee says, hey, I need to make sure I'm doing what you want all the time, so I need you here all the time telling me what to do, looking at situations, telling me how to vote, telling me how to stand on an issue, that's a tough situation, you know? Hopefully, you're going to be able to grow that employee into a situation where they can see a big picture and see the place on the horizon everyone's talking about and get us there. My, my hope is that the city can look at us as candidates, see if we're someone you want to trust to represent you, so you don't have to read a 104-page workshop booklet twice, twice a week. It's a lot of reading, you guys. There's a, there's a lot of stuff to inform yourself on. And I think the idea of us as employees is, look who you want to hire. You've got most of us on the stage tonight. Who do you want to hire to guard the shop? And do their best for the city. And I think that's really the issue. It's not about me making sure you guys know everything we're going to do and how we should vote. It's about you guys finding out who you want to mind the shop so you can have a cool, you know, go home and not stress about government. And if we're screwing some stuff up, please tell us. Tell us how you feel.
Real quick? I just, I think that the reason we have such a, we don't have a downtown, we have a downtown. We have a, really, you know, Cortez is quite a lovely place. I think about many years ago, without the trees and the flowers, we had a really ugly downtown. And it was an ugly, dusty old little old town, and a lot of people still kind of view it that, that maybe don't live here. But we really do have a fine-looking downtown, in my opinion. But I think there's multiple reasons why we don't have businesses downtown. And to the ones who have succeeded, I think they've put in a lot of hard work and have been generous with, you know, with their opinions and ideas of what, what maybe can be done. I've heard a lot about, you know, looking at other communities and seeing how, how do you support a vibrant downtown? You know, foot traffic, people spending their money. What, you know, I've thought about what I could bring in here as far as a business goes and open up shop downtown. But there's lots of things that I think about, but we kind of have to have a niche in this small of a community. And I know one of the preventions of some of the buildings is that they're old and they need to be brought up to code somehow. And that's, that's expensive and that's a big thing that people don't want to deal with, if they have to pay for it out of pocket. And I don't know how that can be remedied, but I think it's one of the reasons why we don't have a lot of downtown. But I think there are many and that questions can be asked. That's all. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Amy?
So I'm going to wrap city function more efficiently down a road, looking at the 2020 draft budget of the workforce by industry. There's 24.2%, which is the highest percentage of the workforce by industry, is the educational services and healthcare and social assistance. Looking at number two of the major employers in Cortez, that Southwest Memorial Hospital, second only to the Montezuma County School District. So taking a look at this, these are hard numbers. And looking at a way for this city to function more efficiently, to roll out incentives, to attract and retain residents for Cortez to slide into these services, these numbers are high above the rest of the things that are bringing, bringing jobs in. And I think that we can wrap around and look at that for the city to function more efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I'd like to draw from several of my colleagues that have had good ideas. Mine has been a learning experience from visiting with various boards in the city. From school board to preservation, and I could go on, and there are a lot that I would like to attend that I haven't had the opportunity yet. But I think it would be a genuine plus if city council members could visit the different boards around town, because I feel like that's where ideas and often collaboration could help our city.
Okay, thank you, David. Ray?
I'll be quick. Basically, the who, what, why, when, and...
Basically, the who, why, when, and where's. We're told four out of the five of those a lot. A lot of whys kinda don't really come out. We've actually had people go up and ask why. We get, we're Marigo Moreau and we get a story. More transparency and honesty is a huge change that I would love to see. Another one is, you know, just looking at different ideas on how things can be done in a different, more productive manner, working with the county commissioners and also working with other boards. And, but again, the county commissioners would be the biggest one. We've lost that entire, you know, friendliness and we need to gain that back. So transparency and trying to work with the community as a whole.
Ray. Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll take and move on. Many business owners in Cortez live in the county and they have a vested interest in what goes on in the city of Cortez, but they don't have any opportunity to vote and, and be a part of the process. How would you work to improve that? And to, so that they were able to be represented in the, some of the city's business that actually affects all of Montezuma County, not just the city of Cortez? We were right.
You know, if you, I see Jim Candelario is here. I've seen him at most of the council meeting. You need to get both governments working together and the ideas of the people coming here on the business that they want and they think they can do. You get somebody here that opens a mom and pop shop that lives here, either in the city or the county. We need to listen to them and what we need to do to improve the working relationship with everybody. And that's bringing the county and the city together.
Amy.
I love this question. I love it so much. Because so many, there's, Montezuma County's thirty-five thousand people. In the city of Cortez, six square miles, there's eight thousand six hundred. There's so many of our friends and colleagues that live in the county. So I, I actually witnessed the other night during that quasi judicial meeting, a great idea. And it's the concept of implementing the, the neighbor. So if you do own a business in, in, in the city or you, you know, this was in relation to the marijuana shop. So if you were a neighbor to the, where the shop's going in or a business owner had concerns like that and did live in the city, you did have a voice. I think it's really important that, that county folks who do own and operate businesses in, in the city get a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray.
Same. I believe that business and landowner rights should have a chance to have a vote in our city, especially if they have land or a business. They pay their property taxes. They actually commit to our community. They're the ones that need to have a say. I mean, a lot of people even say, well, what if Mr. Joe from Texas wants to have a say in his? He sure gets a say. He pays for it. He understands our community's area. He's totally for that. These people need to have a say in. It would be encouragable for me, because I would wanna be able to live in the county at one time. And I would love to have a say in my restaurant or business that I decide to open up later on. I would love to have that say, and I don't. It's even moved some people to not have a say and they don't wanna fight no more. And these people have just given up. These people need to fight and have a say.
Yeah, I was, I was, and they pretty much stole my thunder, but yeah. Is it, is it fair if somebody has taken the game by owning a business in town and not being able, and, and providing revenue through the taxes that are collected? Is it fair that if they live a mile or two out of town, they, they don't have a say in, in how that revenue is spent? And they come to town and, and buy things. So yeah, I, I agree. That's sensible to me.
I, I've spoken on this topic before and I, I, I appreciate the sentiment, but I do think we need to be careful that we, we do limit that to, to county residents, because it's true that the county and the city are very intertwined. But there is a reality where our businesses could be owned from, not county residents, but people from completely outside of our community. And now they have more of a say just for their profits instead of really caring about the, our community and the future of it. But I think how the, the county and business owners can be a part of it is to stay engaged. And the land use code issue is gonna come up again. So we, we, as city council members, we need to make sure that we are including our whole community in the conversation and, and make sure that everybody is engaged. So I encourage all county residents too to keep paying attention.
Thank you, Rachel.
Just to clarify, is that on? I can't tell. On the quasi judicial hearing that Amy mentioned, I think that's something that the city did implement during the Tuesday's council or the meeting. And it's, it's not always a quasi judicial matter. But in that quasi judicial matter, people that own a business inside the city limits but live in the county would be able to stand up, state their name and address and, and what business they have and have a say in that particular quasi hearing. And that's the way I understood it. Just to clarify, that, that doesn't happen at every state.
I was using that as like a transferable format.
Right. Yeah, and yeah, and I agree. I think that's, that's one of the ways, one of the great ways for the county business owners to be able to participate in city government. And the exact same thing that Rachel said, to stay engaged. I don't think there's a way to go back and make it so county residents can vote in the municipal elections and stuff like that.
Go ahead, Jason.
All right, yeah, it's, it's governed by our state on that one. And Rachel hit, hit, hit the nail on the head. They did it to protect us as a small town. They did it to protect our interests, so you didn't get a big global conglomerate move in, put a Manchurian candidate in there to try to, you know, sway the votes in favor of them. It was built to protect the individual. Is it fair? No, it's not, because it's, it's, you know, it doesn't get all of our vote, but it's there. Again, it's one of those things that we're probably not gonna change. But what we can change is the way we communicate with county. You know, we need to be on the same page and good communication with the county commissioners. We need to be able to go out there and listen to the voices of the county as well as we listen to the voices in town. There can't be a town versus county anymore. We have to, we have to work together, because we, we're, we're in a, in an equal relationship. And what affects the county affects us. What affects us affects the county. So it's important that we hear them and we're giving heed to them. They need to be able to stand up and, and speak, because they are, they're still here. They're operating businesses. They own property. You know, they may not have the vote, but they do still have a voice. And that, I think, carries, carries, carries a lot of weight, is that ability to, to say, hey, listen, this is who I am, and not be shunned for the fact that they don't own a piece of property in town. There's too many meetings that I've sat at and go, you know, they didn't like the fact that a property owner was using one of her property addresses and really kind of, you know, made a spectacle of it. And it was just embarrassing. You know, they, they're still a voice. We still work for the people. We're still like community. And everybody deserves that voice.
Thank you. Justin.
I'm gonna read this as a trick question. I think everyone having a say is awesome. Everyone speaking, all, all that's fantastic. But I think the issue is who, as a candidate, is gonna represent your interests. So let me just take a minute and say, I, I think I've got four of fifty employees that live in, that live in the city. Most of my employees live in the county. When I'm off work and I have some time off, I'm in Dolores. I'm in, driving to Durango. That's not even the county. I guess the way to simplify my view is barring legalities of who can vote and who gets to speak at quasi judicial meetings. That's all stuff that isn't quite as important, probably. Well, I don't wanna decide that for you guys. But I think I view the city and the county as one community. I don't think, because where I live, if I go a hundred yards to the east, I'm in the county. It's, most of my friends live in the county. And I think we are one community. And there are legal issues that we're not gonna be able to void by, we, we just won't be able to overturn them. But the importance is your candidates who think that, that it's one community that they're representing. They're not gonna make decisions that are one-sided for the city. And I think the other bottom line on this is cooperation and, and jobs and working with the county and getting along is really a money thing. Working together on projects, how much money will the city put towards a project like, say, paths to Mesa Verde? Will the city step back in and help with co-funding or matching funds with the county on important issues? So these are complex issues that the right candidates will be able to look at, spend the money in the right way to help guide the city forward. So I don't necessarily think it's about making sure everyone can, has to come down and cast a vote, but to make sure your leaders are heading in the right direction.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. What steps will you take to amend the current land use code to better serve the citizens of Cortez? And then what do you think of the medians and the four-way stop at Mildred?
Can I go first?
Yes.
All right, I'll make it quick. I don't, the land use code got dropped and I don't believe in bringing it up again. I'm not for a new land use code. I think we can look at things case by case, but as it, as it occurs, I know several, some of our professionals within the city feel there's a need to look at it. But I wouldn't support us writing or doing a whole new land use code. If we have an issue, let's look at it. And I'm sorry, what was your other question?
What are, what are you on, the medians and the four-way stop, new four-way stop?
Yeah, that's a great question. The medians, I, you know, I thought it was making things more dangerous. I was, I've, I've been wanting us to take some risks to get out of Taco Bell. But Candace at the Welcome Center made a really great point. And I, I haven't gotten the statistics on this, but she felt pretty comfortable that it's actually saved lives. And I haven't heard that brought up before. I heard that she felt that people were getting hit and dying and, and that's serious. And she felt that the medians have literally saved lives. So if we're gonna maybe get an illegal U V ticket, it, maybe it's, maybe it's worth the life. I, it, that's it.
Yeah, thank you. Ray Wright.
Well, first of all, I was going through on the medians when the rescue unit came behind me.
Exactly.
The car next to me had no place to go. I had no place to go until we got done with the median. If they were gonna do that, then why didn't they do it further down where there's more room? Say, by Taco Bell and all the way down there? They wanna dress up the city. Why did it have to be right here? It was wrong.
What was your other second question on?
What do you think of? Oh, the land use. Yeah. That, you know, you guys, they need to bring the county residents and the city together, along with the county commissioners and with the city council, and try to be sensible about it. Some of the stuff that they put in there, I mean, just one item. Per day, did you guys know that it was two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars a day? Did they cite you? They could continue charging you that amount? Come on. This ain't Durango. This ain't Tauri. This is a small town. This is a country town. We like it that way. That's why we're all here. Let, let's be sensible about the county code, not some of the stuff that was put in there. And we just need to start from scratch again and go.
Hey, hey, did everybody keep sidestepping the new four-way stop?
You know what? You know what, Kenny? I am going to hit that one, 'cause I love the four-way stop. I love it. I love the flashy lights of the stop sign. It went in quickly. And it has been a dangerous part of, of, of getting into town. So boom, hit it. The, I am also really impressed that it took us an hour and forty minutes to get to the land use code. So also awesome. And chuckling over the medians, one thing I wanna bring up about the medians is, we call, we call that part of the street Main Street, but it's also 160. That's C dot. That is, you know, it's also, our downtown is structured around it. But C dot also has a big say. C dot also back part of that. Moving on to the land use code, I would love that, I, I love that the, this, this council actually dealt with it. I thought, you know, going into this, that that was definitely something that the new council would still be dealing with. You know, unanimous decision, that's been put aside. That land use code went from a hundred and four pages in 2002 to four hundred and forty-two pages in 2019.
Simplified.
Yeah, so that, that's a lot of, a lot of extra oomph, right? So I would recommend, like, for the next council, if I'm a part of it or not, like, you know, building that, that team camaraderie, coming together, forming the group, learning how everybody works together. And then if the land use code comes up again, then that council deals with it.
Thank you. Bill.
I believe land use code change, ordinance changes will come up again. And when it does, we need to listen to what the citizens of Cortez want to do. As far as the medians, I, I didn't see that they were necessary. But if, if there was something that, that the state of Colorado through C dot mandated that we do, then there's, there's not much we can do about it. But I know as far as safety goes, before, if you had people wanting to turn left, you could, you could actually have three, four, maybe five cars stacked up, getting ready to turn left. Now you might be able to get two cars in there. And then if somebody else wants to turn left, they're left out in the lane there waiting to turn left. So, you know, there's, there's problems with it, for sure. And like I say, in, in the future, we need to, we need to listen to, to what the citizens of the city want before we start working on things and deciding that they're gonna be that, this way or that.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Ray.
We can amend the land use code at any time. I mean, we get two chances to amend it and then it's law. We can take a page out of the county commissioner's book, what they did. I talked to a gentleman who was an ex-county commissioner. They went around to every neighborhood, every community, put boots on the ground and talked to people physically, shook hands physically and figured it out. They went so far as to even go into Toya to make sure that they could get an idea and a general concept. They said they took it to the eighth grade teachers, let them read it over, because we have, we have a community that doesn't have as high of an education. So they wanted to make it common for everybody to understand. We can take a page out of what they did and fix it that way. The medians, I see nothing but a safety hazard. And like everyone said, I, I watch fire trucks almost pile up on that thing and it's scary. I've been tagged almost a couple times by fire trucks. Another thing is it takes away from our historic value of Cortez. I don't know if anybody knows this. Cortez's Main Street was so wide because it was a popular thing for them to turn an actual ox wagon around in Main Street. It was a huge thing. It was a Mormon community thing, because they could actually turn it around. Having these medians, to me, takes away from our historical value of what our community was founded and kind of puts a burden again on emergency. And again, I now can't tell that story, because people are like, who, who, were these medians, Ray? No, no. We had a beautiful, beautiful, open, you know, downtown. Also, I was in the parade of lights. It affected the parade of lights. I felt more nervous that people were close to my car. And it, you know, just because we don't throw candy anymore, it's kind of, like I said, to me, it brings up a safety issue. The four-way stop, another one. I'm gonna, I'd love to see what happens the Fourth of July, just to see how that intersection works the Fourth of July. And that's pretty much where I'm at on that one. And ten thousand dollars for some posts, that kind of was a little bit of extreme, but that's just me.
Thanks, Ray.
I just, I just wanna say on the, kind of pertaining to the land use code, some of the city codes that are in place, I, I can definitely assure you that they are needed for some of the areas in town where you have situations concerning junk and rubbish and trash and garbage that does affect the neighbors and the community. Graffiti, there was one area behind a school that was pretty, had pretty overgrown weeds that, that behind some houses. They had a, a walk-through that was really ridden with graffiti and weeds. And once it was cleaned up, there was a lot of disposed of needles found in that area. So things like that are really important to keep the city safe, especially in those areas around a school. I mean, you know, it's not something I ever thought that I would support, sending a letter to somebody about their weeds. But on the other end of that, I do see where there's a basic need for those things to be brought into check. The medians, the only thing I can say that might be good about them is I think maybe I slowed down a little bit with that visual. I risked my life crossing the street tonight to come here in the crosswalk versus at the light. I mean, I didn't risk my life, but you can be taking your life into your hands crossing the street here. And one of the big things I've noticed is people don't pay attention. Somebody stops for them, so they just head right on out without noticing the oncoming traffic that, you know, sitting there honking and waving, you know, stop. Because people, it seems like they don't look both ways before they cross. before they cross the street anymore. And so I think, you know, it's important. Hopefully, maybe the medians have a positive. And the four-way stop is lovely. And I live in that area where I pass through there every day, so I think it's helped so far. In the future, it may have to, you know, be something different. But I think they did a good job.
Okay, thanks, Ray.
Yeah, my son is your new water foreman for the city. It's Scott Goodall. And he's the boy that goes out 1:30, 2 o'clock, cleans the snow off your Main Street. He uses a 950 front loader. His space that he can operate that is, is small. That's a pretty good-sized front loader. The place he was placing the snow before the truck shows up is in the middle. And that's exactly where C dot put the medians. So next winter, we haven't got the snowfall we need yet to be 100% what we expect here in the low light. It's in the mountains, but it hasn't reached us yet. But next year, he's gonna have a lot of fun out there with a front loader and dump trucks picking up snow and traffics coming into town. It's gonna be a spectacle to watch. But getting back to those medians, did you know that there was three wrecks at that turnoff? Getting yourself off of Main Street into McDonald's the first week they were there? Usually what happens, as police officer was telling me, is the car making the turn, he hits his brake lights to get in that turn pocket at the end of it. The car behind him hits his and by that time, the third car's rented and the second car. So as ugly as they are, I think we could've waited longer now. And I still don't really know what C dot's got planned. But they've got something up their sleeve and I'll find out a little later what it is. But I tell you what, they could've made it a hell of a lot purrier, I think, if it was to enhance our city. My son, when he learned what they were doing, well, he used words. He just celebrated his 55th birthday and I don't think he's old enough to use those words.
All right, I'll leave it.
So I've been reading the land use code and just making sure I'm up to date on what is currently in place. And in the first, like, couple pages, it says that this code is to, is for the public protection, safety and welfare. And I think that's important to keep in mind as we revamp this code. It's gonna come up, obviously, again. And I think that, like, looking at the new, the proposed land use code that was shut down and the one that's currently in place, some of that was copy and paste. And it doesn't reflect our current community, how we've grown. It doesn't take into account, like, Airbnbs and stuff like that, those more modern aspects. And also, there could've been a lot more outreach done for the land use code. And I hope that as we proceed, when it arises again that we are doing that outreach and we are, and as an individual that does outreach, as my occupation, it's the consistency. You meet the people where they're at at times that are convenient and you do it regularly. And that's when you're gonna get the most input. I think it will, it will absolutely need to be addressed. If we're wanting to attract business and people are coming in and trying to repurpose old buildings or trying to put in new buildings, if we have all these barriers in the previous land use code, we really need to revisit it and see how we could better support those businesses that are coming in. And then regarding the four-way stop, and I don't have a comment for the medians. I think people were already using it as a four-way stop, so I think it's okay that they decided to go that route.
Okay, thanks. Ray, or David?
Okay, quickly, I love the four-way stop. It's like Christmas and much needed since I live very close to that intersection. I salute that movement. I wanted to say something about the medians. Granted, they're not gonna win any award. But I want, I want you to think about something. I moved here from Texas. If you step out in front of a car, it doesn't matter whether it's downtown or on the highway, you're gonna meet your maker because we don't stop. There is no law in that state or many of the surrounding states about stopping for pedestrians crossing. Colorado is alone in that, that law, which I think is a very good law. But we have a lot of tourism, especially in one month. People coming through that don't know about that law. They don't know to look for people stepping out in front of automobiles. And for that reason, I think the medians have already saved some lives. I think they will continue to do that.
Thank you, David. Jason?
I'll try to be as quick as possible here. Land use code first, as maybe you know, I was on a task force from the Realtors to help break down, you know, bring down the code. What I have discovered is that it's a boiler, the old code, the new code was a boilerplate. Copied and pasted a lot from the existing code. There is going to be need to look at that. If we want to put together a smart growth plan, which is an economic, an economic growth plan, we're gonna have to address that. We're gonna have to address things in that code that are going to invite, not deter, from people coming in. You know, what was nice about it, and yes, I'm gonna say something nice about the land use code, is that it brought everybody together as a community. You know, we've got 14 people, and I said this before, we have 14 people that are, for some reason, for me, it was the land use code that got me here. Got us involved in the community, whatever their reason was. There's 14 of us here. There's, you know, Margaret Whitney says, "There's no power for change greater than the community discovering what it cares about." We have discovered that we love Cortez and that we want Cortez. We need to make sure that, you know, we serve Cortez. And we're gonna have to take a look at it. But there's also other issues in there. There's budgetary issues in there that we need to look at. Things that have, you know, that we're trying to work through as a council that we're going to have to address. You know, there's, there's a lot of elephants that we have to eat. And it's listening to our, our, our community, knowing, okay, what is that? But also being responsible in government and taking that role and saying, okay, this is the most important thing right now. Four-way stop, I love it. I live right there on the corner of Monazuma and Empire, or Monazuma and Kia Mildred. And it was always sketch to try to make a U-turn to get back to my house. Now it's not. Now I know that I can make a left turn and turn without worrying about somebody making a right, right into me. So it makes me feel, it feel better. Because if you're over there and you see people coming across, they don't go 20 miles an hour at that deal. And so now they're forced to see it and stop a little bit. So I feel a little bit better about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Right now, we're at 8 o'clock, but we have, oh. Rachel?
Well, do we have time?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say it's 8 o'clock, but see how everybody felt about carrying this on to about 8:30. If it's fine with you guys, we have a lot of people that have still got questions and different things, or we can start wrapping it up, but.
Okay. I just have one last comment. And I mentioned it before at the last forum, but the city has a board of adjustments and appeals. And this is an opportunity for applicants who are developing, who believe that the land use code is prohibiting them from exercising their private property rights to go and get variances. And this board has never had enough board members that, while I've sat on it. And I felt like the list of criteria that applicants have to meet for us to approve a variance was very restrictive. So I think that's also an aspect that we need to look at. Is, you know, the land use code isn't gonna fit perfectly for everybody. So we need to also have that avenue well-constructed for people who, you know, wanna exercise their private property rights. So.
Okay, thanks. Well, real quick, 30 seconds to everybody. Why, why do you, what do you wanna do or why do you think you should be the person that's hired to be, or voted elected to be city council?
I believe that I should be elected to city council because I've lived in the city of Cortez long enough to see some of the things that are right with this city and some of the things that are wrong. I wanna continue the things that are right and try to address the things that are, I and the citizens of Cortez believe are wrong. As I've said before, I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe in spending other people's money the same way I would my own. And I believe in not wasting money and taking care of needs first. And give rainy day fund. And then if there's something left for wants, then we can discuss wants and decide what the citizens of Cortez want.
Okay, thank you. Arlene?
I'm running for city council because I believe, although I'm young, I am happy and dedicated to putting in the time, putting in the research and trying to create positive change for our community. I think there, that we are on the cusp of something really great and it's that our community is wanting to thrive and grow. And I really would love to be a part of that change.
Okay, thank you. Ray?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to be here and see what comes of all this. I was here when we tore up the wooden sidewalks. I was here, I remember riding to town on a wagon, horseback, parking a horse up here behind our culture center with the Indians. That's why we got that two-lane road so we could turn those critters around and head on out of town. We came to town once a month, once a month. First stop was Works Mill with flowers. My grandmother would give the list to Belet Store next door to Wilson. He would fill the order and set it on the wood. Granddad go down to the blacksmith's shop.
Okay, Ray. Yeah. Thank you.
I was gonna give the history of Cortez.
I was born and raised here. I love this community. I did go to school away from here. I came back. Like I said, I love it here. I'm working on having a house here. I'm working on raising my daughter here. I want this to be a place for my daughter to come back if she would like to. I, I love Cortez. I don't have any pre, pre, perceived notions from any other, anybody, you know, a lot of people know me, but I don't have connections to anybody. I'm not really here for any sort of personal thing. I, I really wanna help. I've always wanted to help. I was in FCC at a younger age. I like and want to help. But now I'm at an age where I feel like I can't. And I'm willing to listen and wanna learn. That's another one. I, I would love to learn more about this city.
Thanks, Ray. David?
Well, I would like to quote Bob Dylan and sing, "The times they are changing." That's inevitable. Change is inevitable. And it needs to be planful and widespread so everyone benefits. And compromise is not a forlorn word.
David?
Justin? Yeah, I would like to be on city council to represent people fairly and hopefully contribute positive growth for the community and be a positive representative of everyone. Thank you.
Jason?
I wanna be on city council because I have great hair. The city of Cortez has given me so much. I mean, this is my livelihood. I'm a Realtor and I love helping people out. And this great city deserves great people serving it. And I believe, oh, I don't believe, I know. I know that I have the skill set needed to help be a great city council person and help this city be the great city that it is. We have great communities because, you know, the community is, is our strength. And we need to exploit that strength. And I know that I can be that person to help bridge that gap and help us to continue to grow and be strong.
Okay, thank you. Rachel?
I think we can all agree that we live in a wonderful place. And I believe that every candidate up here really wants the best for this community. But city council is more, this is a huge responsibility. And there is a lot of work that is gonna go into this. And to prepare for this, I've been the only candidate meeting with the city manager and every department to get a better understanding of their perspective and their experience with city council. And I think this has helped me become the most prepared for this position to work for the people.
Justin?
Siri, set a timer for 30 seconds. Okay, I have a thought exercise for you guys.